To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to do the introductions, please?
So, um, board, we have Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Rich Hewlett, Jessica Van Oort. I'm Kristin Powers. We have Julie Mack and Deb Hawkins virtually, and Bruce Surjane and Frank Nelson in the audience. Uh, there are... So Deb sent out an updated agenda yesterday that had a couple of additions, and then since then, um, two other additions, executive session again to continue discussing labor relations agreements with employees, and there's been a... I don't know if you wanted to talk about the donation. There's been a discussion of a potential donation.
At this point, I don't think.
Okay, so then, that's just one other addition. So, I don't think any deletions.
Gets earmarked, and then it can't be used for anything else.
And then the minutes that need approval are from September 20th.
All right, um, those looked all right to me. I'll move that we accept those minutes.
Everything looked in order?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Carried.
Bruce? You're up.
So, I assume everyone shot my letter and read that?
Yes.
So, I'm just kind of looping back because it's a hard tax for me to swallow, um, seeing that there's no septic hookup there, so I'm wondering if there's something that we could work together on or find a solution to either mitigate that, uh, remove it until we're actually using it, or something like that.
I think in order for the taxes to be... That would be technically abating the taxes, so that would have to be applied to the BCA. Am I right on that?
So, the existing taxes, yes.
But this is few... Right.
But sort of like from here forward, I...
Here forward, yeah.
I'll deal with that.
Okay.
But from here forward, I'd like to figure out a solution that, um...
I think what we need to do is to actually make sure that it does have a hookup, so that if it... If you choose to hook it up, it's available.
Sure.
So I think... I don't know. We should be able to dig it up with the backhoe, because where the sewer line is, it's not... It was meant to all blasted and filled. I mean, it was 30 years ago, 40 years ago, but...
Has it never had a hookup?
Well, right, it was never tapped in. Don Bush owned it at the time, I think.
It should go into the...
The fishing game, and I don't know anything about that, but I don't understand why when the sewer was put in, it was supposed to have a hookup in the line for that building. Every building within the guidelines of the sewer ordinance was supposed to have a hookup.
Maybe it has one, just isn't...
So it may very well be that there is a hookup in the road.
Just not in the building.
That you've never tied into.
Yeah.
There's nothing coming in the building from the road.
Right. Well, it would be just basically a capped-off T, right, hit on the main sewer, and then the rest of it is the property owner's responsibility to tie in.
Yeah.
It's supposed to dig up. Would that be on the map?
Well, that's what they couldn't find on the map, so it's gray, because there was an as-built map, and everything should be documented on it, but I don't think... I think Keith looked at it, and he couldn't tell definitively that there was your hookup on the line, installed when they went through there.
Well, I wanted to talk at some point about the Vermont Outdoor Recreation Community Grant, which has to do with the building that Bruce is talking about, and I don't know if that would be good to talk about now or to put into our old business, because it is a grant that we applied for some time ago.
Okay. Um, I think that we have to work through this first before we can talk about the grant and future use of the building, and I know in your proposal, there would be restrooms, so we would definitely need a hookup.
Right.
So that would be...
My thought was just that it's possible, because the grant money is meant to do a feasibility study on the building, and it's possible... I mean, this feasibility study would be done by a structural engineer who'd be checking like the integrity of the building and making sure it can be used for what we want and Bruce wants to use it for, so I'm wondering whether that might include seeing if there's actually a sewer, I mean, if that would be part of that assessment, or if we could use some of the grant monies to dig it up and double-check if there's actually a hookup there.
Okay.
Because obviously, if there's not a hookup there, we can't use it for public restrooms for the...
So, it just, as you're talking about, just, I have to talk, reach out to Jill, because maybe she can go in with the camera. If she has... If there's a manhole close enough, she may be able to go in with the camera and determine if there's actually a hookup there, and we wouldn't have to dig up the road.
Yeah.
That would be the best bet right there.
Yeah, because if there's no hookup, obviously Bruce shouldn't be paying for a hookup that doesn't exist.
Right.
But if there is a hookup, then we got to figure out what to do about it.
Right. That's... It was always... I mean, when the sewer ordinance was placed, you know, everything went through, and they put a hookup in front of all buildings that were potentially used as either commercial or inhabitable, and everybody had to pay per hookup.
And I assume, I mean, how it is in the building next door, the bigger building that I own, is it's into the building. The T is put on, and it extends into the building, the actual main line.
That happened a long time after that, because was that... That wasn't there when the fishing game owned that building, was it, Frank?
Uh, the T?
That... You never let that little building next door go through the fishing game into their sewer, did you?
It did.
You did?
It was set up so that there was a pipe that went from the white building into the sewer, uh, through the fishing game.
How long ago was that, right from the word go?
It was for years before my time. It was set up by somebody, Rod Grevels or somebody set it up. I can't remember who. It was way back that that happened.
Because I remember when Bush owned that building, he always complained that he paid a sewer tax, but he didn't have running water or any sewer in it.
Yeah, but that pipe did go there, but there's another factor to consider is that Bruce owns the building, and the building next door, if you consider somehow both of those as one unit, then he would only be responsible for the, uh...
Yeah, I think we kind of talked about that last time this came up, was combining both properties, but I don't want to do that for multiple reasons, especially if we do something more public with this other building.
And even so, buildings like Erickson's House...
Right.
dating back to when the sewer was installed, was a big house with two apartments in the back, all one big thing, but they paid three hookups, because they had two apartments, two single-bedroom apartments in the back.
Sure.
So, conjoining the buildings doesn't really qualify, just like Ray Jones on the top by the school, that house right there that Kevin Deveneaux lives in had like five different little teeny apartments all attached to it, and he paid for several hookups.
Oh, I guess I misunderstood. Last time you said if we joined the properties, that would be one way to go about avoiding paying two times.
His use was the same use between the two buildings, and it wasn't additional damage.
But that's moot, because Bruce doesn't want to do that, right?
Right.
No, I'd rather not do that.
So it wouldn't... Right, so, uh...
There's got to be some, something that we could work on together to... I know this is like kind of a system issue, and it's a bylaw issue that is screwed up, not something anybody's personal responsibility, but, um, it's like, it's just a hard one for me as well. It's like I'm paying tax on an idea, you know, a tax on a garage that I haven't built yet.
I can understand that. However, when you bought the building, you knew that there was a sewer tax associated with the building when you purchased it?
I did, also assuming that there was a sewer hookup.
Right, so then, we can make the sewer hookup work, so I guess, until I know definitively whether or not we have a sewer hookup, which we should be able to decide in a month, I don't... I'll talk to Jill tomorrow and see if she can scope that and determine if she feels that she has camera enough to scope it and see to count if there's a hookup there or not. Otherwise, we'll have to dig up the road and install the hookup.
Okay.
Frank?
Would you be able to use ARPA funds for that cost?
Well, we can use ARPA funds for most things, yeah, I mean, and wastewater-related things.
Anybody else got any comment on this?
I think the first thing to do is run a camera down through there and see if there even is a hookup.
Yep. That's... I'll talk to Jill about it tomorrow and see if she can bring her camera down, and then we'll go from there and see where we end up.
Okay, so I can expect somebody to follow up on me?
I didn't quite hear.
Did I expect somebody to follow up with you?
Yes, yes. We will follow up with you as soon as we get a report from Jill, the wastewater treatment operator.
Okay, great, thank you.
What is the actual number on that building?
I just don't know.
Not sure. Okay, I'll get back to you. I have your email. I'll probably shoot you an email or something like that, let you know what she has in mind, and when she has a timeframe or when she can do it or not.
Great, thank you.
We'll work from there. Thank you. Do you have anything else, or?
Nope, that's it. I was going to hang out.
We'll get that one piece of the puzzle hammered out, and then we can work from there.
Great.
Thank you. So as far as the donation, I talked to Julie, and she said that there is a way that if somebody wants to make a donation, it can be put in a fund and earmarked for a specific purpose and not get lost in the general account and not get used for something else, because we've had someone approach us about making a donation with a desired purpose for the donation.
I talked with him today, and if we could get him the name of the fund, he could share that with his lawyer and get that taken care of.
He wants to get that taken care of?
Right away.
Okay, so I guess we'll talk to Julie and establish...
It doesn't seem like there's necessarily a fund. It's...
Just make it out to the town of Pollet?
Well, we'll have to get with Julie on that, but basically, there's a line item.
Probably the best thing is...
Like the general fund, or?
Let me pull up the email.
Can you bring up the email? See, I asked her an email. One second, Frank.
I can answer that.
Okay, you're on anyways. Okay, Julie, please do.
She's frozen.
In the meantime.
In the meantime... She just texted me and said, "Oops."
It just locked on her.
Okay, so, in the meantime, there's a capital maintenance fund for the town of Pollet, and there would be a line item added to the capital maintenance fund, and the money would be held there.
That's where all the rest of the funds and stuff are at?
Yes, so she's now texting me. We have several designated funds, money that is committed to specific issues. I'm getting it real time here. Hold on, standby.
So if we just get, you know, the details?
Probably the best thing, if the three of you could get together and work through that.
Yeah, we can figure that out.
Frank?
You can make a motion to establish a fund, make up your own name for it, whatever, and it's done, and the fund will be established however Julie does it, and so the person can write the check accordingly to that fund.
And so Julie's continued to say, "All we have to do is account for money in and out, and we can hold it physically in any bank account we choose."
Just make the check out to the town of Pollet?
Asking that question.
Okay, you just have to make...
Town of Pollet is who it is, and probably, I mean, reference a memo of what it's to be used for.
And it just gets, it gets put into one account, and then the line is established for the purpose?
Yes, so she, you know, she said that...
Frank?
With a traditional business, there's a general fund, and you operate from that. With municipalities and nonprofits, you do a different type of funding called fund accounting, where you can establish multiple funds, and those essentially develop their own general, general fund, separate entity-type processing, which is what happens with a sewer. It's the same thing, same concept.
Julie's also saying we may want to just touch base with Merrill as well as the auditor, so that we can set everything up properly.
Okay, that makes the most sense.
So I think if we get with Julie, Merrill, and whoever the auditor is, I think is that Mudgeet?
Mudgeet, yeah. So probably to start, you and Julie, and then...
She also said, "Just so everyone's aware, there might be a small expense associated with doing this properly."
Right.
But that would, I mean, I'm sure that just is the expense associated with...
Okay, so that makes the most sense to have a discussion with those two people to make sure that we establish this in the proper order with all the proper documentation. Okay, so is that something you can work through? All right, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, Julie says she's sorry.
She's what?
She's sorry for her technical difficulties.
So, Rich?
All good.
Can you just tell her that Rich?
Yes, I'll talk to her tomorrow or later.
She can connect with Merrill and...
Yes, I will.
And Mudgeet and...
I'll help to connect the dots.
We can get all, everything in order, okay. Any other announcements? I brought that up because I jumped lines when I was looking at my...
Yeah, you really just jumped right to it. But that's all right. That was kind of like an announcement. If anybody would like to make a donation to the town of Pollet, you may do so.
Please do.
Please do. We would love it.
Zoning administrator, that brings me to a very sensitive subject. Unfortunately, we lost our zoning administrator, and please take a moment to remember in honor of Jonas for the great job that he did in stepping into a role that was left vacated, and we've certainly appreciated all the work he did to get us back up and running and stay with us, and for an interim zoning administrator, he stayed on for quite a few years, but we certainly were thankful and pleased that he helped us through this time, and we'll certainly miss him for sure. Do you have a report from the planning commission?
I do. We met last Monday, so I emailed this around to everyone this afternoon, so you can have it to look back on if you need. The planning commission met on September 26 at 7:30 PM. We continued to work with Ed Bowe from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission on updating the zoning bylaws as per our bylaw modernization grant. We finished working on setbacks and lot coverage for the village and commercial zone, and also worked on updating parking requirements for all the zones. Ed thinks we have about four more meetings' worth of work, and then we can begin the process of approval for this bylaw update. So just like we did, I guess that was about two years ago now, when we did our last bylaw update, we'll just have to go through again with this. This is largely, I'm going to have to do with setbacks, with coverage requirements, with parking, and with some updates to conditional uses and things.
And this has to go through that process where you have to warn it, planning commission warns it?
Yep, exactly. Yep, planning commission warns it, and then we send it to select board, select board warns it.
Warns it, oh, okay.
Yep, yep, it'll go through that whole process. So we're, he can't be with us in October, so that would be like November. We're probably looking at doing this warning process in the spring, like March, something like that, with these updates. That's it from my report.
Okay, good, thank you. What's happening on the roads?
Not much to report. They started on the road sides. Some, they hauled the shoulder material in on that paving project, so that's ready to go once they get it paved. Hauling, I think the winter sand is pretty much all hauled, and I think that they're, they should be into the fall grading. I haven't witnessed that yet, but I know that was on their to-do list, so. They did some ditching on, uh, 153 in preparation for potentially paving that next year, getting some culverts put in and ditches dug. That way, if they, when they put the culverts across, they'll have time to settle before we pave them, as opposed to doing it the year you pave it. It always settles on in and creates a divot, so.
It seems like we've always tried to let it have one free staff cycle before we've done its work pretty well for us.
Yeah, so that's all I have to report.
Sorry, I'm just laughing at Julie. Keith has also worked with Stephanie from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, I think, to do the grant closeout, and then I got an update today that the Grants and Aid Program, which is all the best management practices, it's the grants program that we use for Kelly Hill Road and also Harriet Brook Road, that has been totally revamped in terms of the expectations for how we're going to close that out, and then also for how we approach the projects in future years. So, we're going to be required to do some, we'll just have to be more involved. We'll have to be updating our road inventory and updating our best management practices all online, and also, before we start a project, we'll have to get a pre-approval for our work, which I don't think has really been done in the past. So I have to dig a little bit deeper into that. I got the email this afternoon, and there's a training, I think that's on next Thursday, maybe. So it seems important and something that is necessary, so I'm going to look into that and see if that's something that I might be able to do, or talk to Keith about it, and just see how we want to handle wrapping our arms around that, because I think it needs to be done, so that we can be on it.
Good, thank you very much. Any reports from the assessors? Nothing? Town clerk's memo?
Yeah, I'm here. I don't have much either. Um, I'm just the early voting has begun. The warnings, the two notices that I gave Kristin for you guys to have a hard copy of the notices that came in from DLC, and I just need that form signed for Dale that was not signed two weeks ago. He did come in and sign it, and that's all I have.
So I guess this is the one we have to sign for the fire warden. Is there, got a spot for the chair and a spot for everyone else?
Everybody gets to sign.
And the other batch of papers looks like it's the, um, those tobacco things that we were, tobacco warning control things?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that we were emailed. I don't think we have to do anything with those. Is that right, or just information?
No, it's just the hard copies.
Hard copies, right.
All right. I'll hand these hard copies back to you, then, Kristin.
Okay. Anybody got questions for Deb? All right, Deb, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Have a good day, everybody.
You too.
Bye, Deb.
Town treasurer, did she get hooked back up, or is she done?
Julie, are you here? I know that's her.
I'm technically here, but I can't access my memo.
Okay.
If you could just read it.
Okay. There are three warrants this week. The payroll for the period was $8,438.63. Accounts payable was $1,207,561.96. General fund monies, $1,182,739.71. Highway, $23,717.38. Wastewater, $9,543.50. Appropriations to outside entities and the voted inter-fund transfers, as well as the highway first-half payments are included on the separate warrant for $416,303. The AP warrant also includes the first-half school tax payment to Meadow East School District. Three motions are for the payroll warrant, appropriation warrant, and accounts payable warrants.
So, everybody okay with the warrants?
Yes.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we accept these three warrants, 23017, 23018, and 23019.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Carried.
I just opened up the mail in this smart from G-Town.
Oh, yeah, I got one of those as well.
You got one too?
Yep, for the planning commission, yeah.
Okay, so...
We won an award, I guess. We're a smart rural community. Good for us.
If I could just bring their decent service over on the other side of town, we'd be in good shape.
That would be nice.
This is training. Oh, Julie, while you're on this, this, I believe that this repair on the phone was issues at the treatment plant, and Jill had been in contact with them.
So it was inside?
I believe so. Um, I had a little bit of back and forth with Jill, but I think she could answer any questions you have on this, but I know that they had, they'd been having issues with the phone, and they finally got it straightened out. I think she said that they had to put something new in, and maybe even a new modem or something, so they could get their internet back, and there was some monkey business that they had to do, but I think it'd be best if you could just check with Jill.
I can do that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Frank?
If that, since the lightning strike happened, that could be an insurance claim.
Well, the, interesting, because the last guy that came said that the motherboard on the alarm system wasn't caused by a lightning strike, so we don't know. There's no definitive proof that there was a lightning strike. It wasn't like anybody noticed this right after the...
The insurance companies, what they do is they have a map, and they have a history of all lightning strikes where they happen, so they can see if one happened on a certain date without doubt.
Any other questions for Julie? Wait. No, we're all good. Thank you, Julie. Emergency Management?
So Bob Morlino shared a report for September. He and Jay attended the Vermont Emergency Management Prop...
He and Jay attended the Vermont Emergency Management Preparedness Conference in Killington. Bob Morlino attended the FBI Albany working, WMD Working Group meeting in Pittsburgh. And Jay and Bob attended the Rutland Regional Emergency Management Committee meeting virtually.
Excellent. Health officer?
So Jennifer shared that there is no new town health officer activity to report regarding COVID and masks. COVID cases remain low in Vermont, so there's no change since the 9/6/22 Select Board meeting. The newer bi- bivalent vaccine is widely available, doctors' offices, and many pharmacies for people 12 years old and older who completed their primary COVID-19 vaccine series or received their last booster or additional dose at least two months ago. It is safe to get this vaccine and the flu shot at the same time. And that's all from Jennifer. Here's these signed things.
Waste water treatment, would you mind, she said it's a whole bunch of ones, but like toward the last page was the story for, about what's been going on.
Let's see. There are a lot, um, hold on a second. Towards the last page of which, oh, nope, that's not it.
There's like six, six attachments that came with the email and I think like your last one is the one that.
Well, Mike, um, I see no stor- no good stories, let's see. Oh, 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 okay. So, so small. Um, all right, so in addition to performing all compliance monitoring and preventative maintenance, the following list highlights events for the period above. Um, and nine, September 8th, Aria collected the monthly samples and dropped off at the West Rutland Courier location. September 13th, is this what you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Aria observed the rails had, observed the rails had fallen out of place and pump one had fallen over at the bottom of Spruce Gum Pump Station. Jill called A1 to report and asked them to schedule the repair ASAP. 9:15, Aria collected the second E. coli sample and dropped off at the, at the West Rutland Courier location. 9:20, A1 at Spruce Gum to replace the rails and reinstall pump, performed the air release replacement on Route 153, cleaned the scum from Egg Street Pump Station, Jill and Aria oversaw and helped with traffic control. Also on 9:20, Jill ordered a new mini fridge phone and hose with sprayer for Pollet. 9:26, phone company came onsite and fixed phone line and replaced internet modem that was fried. Also on 9:26, Aria called Jill to report that the center rail fell out of pump ones, pump one spot at Spruce Gum Pump Station. Jill called A1 to report this disappointing failure and ask them to come ASAP to fix this again with no new changes. 9:27, A1 back to pump station to repair the pump. 9:30, the countryside technician found that the motherboard panel diagnosed by the previous technician is fried was not bad and did not replace it. And that's the end of the story. What a tale.
She just can't figure it out.
I love that she had a disappointment in there. It's disappointing.
Yes, so, that's, that's the story.
Without, without them really fasten up to anything, it sounds like they didn't tighten up, the bolts good. And she popped the cover to look in there and it had come loose and dropped down and the other pump was cocked and growling and, but it's all back together now and all the pumps are working nice and.
I like the ad about mini.
She sent me a little video with the pumps running in there, so I could hear how good they were running, I was like, oh good, but I'm glad it's better. They hit us pretty hard for service too on that. A1 waxed us like 200 bucks an hour for those guys.
Well, did they charge us to come back and fix it?
No.
Well, good.
Well, they haven't tried to yet, but I'm sure it won't, it won't happen. They alluded to the fact that it probably wasn't installed properly, so.
Okay, okay, good.
Any questions about the treatment plant? Facilities report. You have sent out a nice email on, on the three.
Yeah.
Three options.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just talk with the air purifiers. So yeah, Mike had sent me this list of air purifiers that were recommended by Consumer Reports. So I did, I, I looked up with these different ones, which ones were available to purchase, like directly from a website and not that you had to go through some third-party dealer or something, so that knocked off the top one, because the top one was not available just to purchase, you have to get it from someplace special. But the second one was this one here at the bottom, the Molecule. It was the second highest recommended by Consumer Reports. And this other one here, Half a Space, was also on their list, I think it was about halfway down, like they had 10 ones, and this was like number six or so. And then I also put in the Blue Air, which is the one that Kristen had personally recommended that she has. And it also was on, near the top of a list of best air purifiers that was done by CNET. Um, that's just a website that I check about, they do technology stuff, I always look at their list for printers and computers. So they also had a list of air purifiers and Blue Air was on there. So, um, as you can see on this list, um, for all of them except the Molecule, which would, only has two different sizes, one is huge and one is tiny, so, so we were talking about this space and Deb's office space. And thank you for measuring them, you guys, last time for me, I used those numbers. For the Blue Air and the Half a Space, we would have a differently sized one, a bigger one for this main space and a smaller one for Deb's space. And you can see the prices for the, for the larger and the smaller ones, like for example with the Blue Air, the larger one for this space would be 332 and the one for Deb's office would be 276. I gotta point out that those ones by Blue Air are currently on a fall allergy sale. So they're normally like 600 or something and they're on the sale right now because of fall allergies, I guess. So I put on the on-sale prices. And then you can see the price for the filter, which they expect that you can change every six months. All three of these companies do a filter subscription, where you can just sign up and they send you the filter at the appropriate time and bill you at that time, which seems reasonable to me. And then for the Half a Space, you can see the main space one for out here would be 899 and Deb's office one, which is on sale, would be 249. For the Molecule, it's basically a thousand dollars for their unit. Um, the Molecule unit does a little bit kind of like what, um, what Dave was talking to us about, it has a special filtration called PECO that does destroy viruses, but it doesn't produce ozone. I specifically looked at that, I know you were mentioning that. But it costs a little more, whereas both the Blue Air and the Half a Space use the HEPA filters, which are the good, high-quality filters. The main differences that I can see is that the Blue Air just has this single filter and the Half a Space one has the filter plus a pre-filter and the activated carbon, which, um, will then make it smell nicer, I guess. So it, it has those several filtered things. And you can see there's just a little bit difference in the Half a Space says every four months to change the filter and the Blue Air says every six months. Both those ones filter between three and five times an hour for this size of space, so. I think they're honestly fairly similar, except that the Half a Space has a triple filter. So yeah, those are, those are the ones that I looked up.
So that's considerable cheaper than, than what the Eris.
Yeah.
System was gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, even this Molecule, which is a little more expensive, um, it would be, if we did with that one, it would be a thousand dollars for each unit and so a total of two, whereas I think with the one that, that Dave was talking about, it was about a thousand eight hundred for a single unit. So yeah, these are, all these options are considerably less than what he was pitching
Does anybody have any opinion on? You think we want to get more information or do we want to just try a couple of them and see?
I say we go with the one recommended by Kristen.
It's also the one that's on a big sale right now.
Oh boy.
She has seen it in use, she's changed the filters, and they're great.
They are great. Uh, they are great.
Do we have a second on that?
Um, so the Blue Air?
I can second that.
All right, so two, two units, you're thinking?
Um, yeah, and the, yeah, the information is here and I'll, I can hand you my paper if you wanted to copy down any of this stuff.
Thank you.
It mentions which two units we would get. A slightly larger one for this main space and a more medium-sized one for Deb's office.
Not at all.
Okay.
I just put it out there, I kind of sniffing around to see what you guys are thinking.
Hope you all love it. Well, I did see it's extra quiet, so that's nice.
They're very quiet.
They did say that on their webpage.
Okay, so we're all good with that? Motion made and seconded to buy the, the Blue?
Air.
Blue Air, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Carried.
Excellent.
All right.
Deb says thank you.
Abstain.
Okay.
What's that?
I said I'd like to abstain at this.
Bobby's abstaining.
From being involved in this motion?
At this time, I, I'm not completely sold on him.
Okay, well, there's no roll call, roll call, so.
No.
We'll just know.
Three to one, we're good.
Okay.
So what I'll do then is I will go ahead and, because it'll have to be a FedEx card purchase on their website, I will send the information to Julie with the links to both of the units we want to get, so that she can go ahead and make that purchase.
Julie, are you good on that? Julie's back.
Oh.
Third time's a charm. Thumbs up from Julie.
Okay, great, I will do that tomorrow.
Okay.
Frank?
Cause that's COVID II related, can that be our funds paying for that?
It could be, if we want it to be. It's a fairly small purchase, I don't think it matters a whole lot one way or another, but it might as well be.
It can be under office equipment, I'm sure it works, you, you can talk that over with Julie.
Okay.
You know, the best, the best option for us, thank you.
Got it.
Anything else under the facilities? I did send Dave Armstrong a message telling him that we'd like him to do those repairs, but I don't know if he's, if he's got a, a schedule yet. I know that he's, he's supposed to do some roof work for us, but the last couple of weeks of rain has, has put it, put him quite behind on his other roofing jobs and stuff, but I'm sure he will get to this in a timely fashion.
Sue Laporte has been in touch with me regarding some, like the list of various things, both regarding maintenance and repairs that need doing on town hall, so I'm just gonna continue to get with her on that and when something reaches the point of needing to be done, I'll let everyone know.
Okay. I don't know if we, we need a handyman, really.
Yeah, cause it seems like largely the things on Sue's list are things like cut the brush back from here and, you know, just some of them are like exterior maintenance things.
Who does the green?
Who does the what?
The town green.
The town green, uh, White Lawn Mower Service.
Could that be a potential to, to contact them and see if they wouldn't mind doing a little bit of?
Not really sure if they do anything, basically just mow lawns, I think, don't they?
He'll do a little more trimming, but not, not anything extensive.
We could ask. I've got some loppers.
Is there anything else under the facilities or?
Not for me.
Older unfinished business?
Um, I think this is where we would have the grant update.
Right, yes.
Okay, so, this is the, um, Vovet Grant, the Vermont Outdoor Recreation Communities Grant, which we applied for last fall, and they have taken their sweet time about getting around to doing a grant agreement. They were gonna do it in the spring and then they're understaffed and they finally got around to us. So, um, they fund, the, the grant originally was for us, we worked together with Rupert on it. And the plan was to, um, to upgrade, to, to resurface the parking lots, both in Rupert and in West Pollet, and to put up some signs, both in Rupert and West Pollet, saying where you can park and in Rupert, a couple places where you can't park, because there were having issues with people parking in the wrong place for the rail trail. And also then to, um, to take out a long-term lease on Bruce's building and turn it into the Welcome Center. So they fully funded the part about the parking lots. For the Welcome Center situation, they, um, the committee that looks at the grant was concerned about the integrity of the building, to make sure that this building had a good enough structure to be changed into a Welcome Center and that that would all work out. So what they did instead of funding it fully, was they're giving us $40,000 to do a feasibility study on the building. And so we talked with Jackie Dagger, who's the, who's the manager, well, she's, she's the, the point person for this grant right now. And we, we came to the conclusion that basically what this 40K could fund would be to get a structural engineer to check out the building and to basically, you know, go, look at it and make sure that it was, that it could be made into what we want it to, and also to draw up some preliminary architectural plans for the changes that would have to be made to it. Does that pretty much sum it up, Bruce, from our conversation with her?
Yep, pretty much, yeah. We both had questions because it was seemed like an exuberant amount of money for a feasibility study and then we wanted to kind of figure out what that feasibility study really was, so.
Yeah, well, it sounds like.
They did offer some leeway, like if we wanted to use that feasibility study money to kind of, I don't know, just kind of around that building a little bit more, like.
Yeah, it seems like the main part that they need to have happen is the structural engineer look at the building and to draw up a, like, how feasible is it to turn this building into what we want to? But Bruce and I were saying, could we also then use some of that money for the, 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 in the planning of the building, right, to get some architectural drawings, to work out the plan, not to actually start building it, but to have it fully set and ready to go. Cause then the concept would be that once this feasibility part was done, we could apply for the same grant in a subsequent year. They're gonna do it again this coming year and they hope it will be yearly, but they aren't, they aren't fully funded past, um, 2023. And then they could, if the feasibility study says, yes, this will work out, go for it, then we could apply for the money to actually do the construction in an upcoming grant. And they seem pretty positive, would you say, Bruce, about the possibility of funding it?
And they did.
In a subsequent, um, grant. They liked the idea a lot, they just, they saw that no previous planning had yet been done on it, so they were like, we need to make sure that it will, that it will work out. So the question for us as a Select Board is, do we want to go ahead and accept this Even though it is not as much as we initially asked for, um, there is no match with this grant, so it's just money and it's for us and for Rupert. My thought is that it seems, I mean, I very much like the idea of this Welcome Center and think it would add a lot to West Pollet if we could get it to go through. And even though it isn't the full thing that we wanted, I think it's still great that we got it and I'd like to go ahead with it.
It doesn't seem like it's gonna cost us anything.
Yeah, there's really no drawback to us, yeah. I love that there's no match.
Do as much as we can do with it.
Is there any time limit on it?
They've extended the time because of taking so long to get back to us, so I think that we definitely have through all of 2023 to use it. And if it is primarily used for a study, we can, and I, I think we might even have till partway through 2024. Again, I haven't got the grant agreement document. What Jackie asked me to do was to run this past the Select Board, make sure everybody was good with it. I don't think we even have to take a vote at this time, but if the Select Board is pretty good with this, they'll draw up the grant agreement, they'll send it to us and then at the next meeting we can take a vote and sign it.
Now, as far as the parking lot work, do we have to hire contractors to do that?
I don't think so, um, the, John, who we're talking, I think it's John, in, in, who's working with Rupert, they intend to have their people do their work, um, and they intend to have their people do their work, um, and just pay them from the grant money. I think they're, they're
Their, their road crew is good.
Yeah, their road crews, it's just, it's just resurfacing with new gravel.
Okay.
Basically, so their road crew is down for it. So depending on how busy our road crew is, I mean, for our things, we could either, you know, pay Rupert's crew or our crew, whichever we wanted.
Okay.
I also went to a very interesting meeting with, did I talk about that, the last one, the D and H rail trail meeting? Don't think I did. Um, it was from all the different towns that work with the D and H rail trail and the maintenance on the rail trail has been turned, um, over to AOT, um, rather than the Department of Parks and, and Forests. So they seem like they're really on top of things and they will in the future, because the state owns the right of way for the whole rail trail, which actually technically includes most of the parking lots, even though we as a town maintain them, um, they will want to at some point get into an official signed agreement with us regarding the, but it won't be this year. So for now, we'll just continue on as we had, but I did have, did I have it written down? There is a particular person now who we should call if there are down trees on the trail and I don't have his, his phone number on this paper, cause he gave me a card, which I don't have. So I will get back with, um, I'll probably let Deb know in fact what this number is, cause someone would probably complain to her if there's down trees. So yeah, they have one person in particular whose job is to maintain and take care of down trees on all the rail trails in the state now. So he drives a lot. He's, yeah, he's all over the place. But I can get Deb his info so that if someone has any issue with the rail trail and its maintenance or down trees, they can just call him.
All right, so does anybody have any, any questions or comments about accepting these grants to, to do this, this work for the parking lot and the feasibility study on, on the mark? Okay.
Okay, I'll get back with Jackie and tell her to draw up the agreement.
Good, thank you. Anything else under older unfinished? I think we're good. New business, Meadowwee School Board report.
Julie's back.
Julie's back. Do you want to recap that, Julie?
Hi, guys.
Hi, Julie.
Um, so I'm just gonna read the, the, um, whole thing that I had sent on to Kristen. Um, Dear Pollet Select Board, at the September meeting, the Meadowwee School Board voted to begin a monthly report to the town select boards. Our intent with this report is to increase community awareness about the work that we are doing. The Meadowwee School District is committed to engaging with our community in an effort to ensure that our public education system works to the benefit of all and is at a standard and cost agreeable to our community. We hope that you will be able to find the time to include a reading of our monthly report at your meetings. Um, so that's sort of my intro and my ask that we can include this in your regular meetings and then below, um, where I will continue now is what the actual report would look like. Um, so September twenty twenty-two, Meadowwee School District report to the Pollet and Rupert Select Boards. At our regular meeting on nine twelve twenty twenty-two, the Meadowwee School District discussed the Meadowwee Schools new annual goals and report on progress, reported on progress towards last year's goals, updated the annual work plan to set the date for a community engagement meeting next year, adopted driver's ed policy, approved mandatory policy on non-discriminatory mascots and school branding. The Meadowwee School Board is currently seeking candidates for appointment to fill a board vacancy. The candidate must live in Pollet, the appointment will be in effect until the town meeting in March, when they would then need to run for office. Please submit a letter of interest to slustkeel@c.keele@brsu.org. There are several vacancies within the Bennington Rutland Supervisory Union from bus drivers to custodians to parent educators. Although the Meadowwee School is well-staffed, we would love to grow our pool of substitutes. Please find information about these postings on the B R S U website. We are looking to our communities to help fill these important positions, so please spread the word. As always, our monthly meetings are open to the public and we value your input. Please stop by sometime to participate in an open meeting. Thanks for your support, we hope to see you soon. Respectfully, Julie Mack, Meadowwee School District Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I guess we need to put that in the form of a motion that we would read, read that under, I guess it could be read under reports probably, right?
Yeah, we have all these other reports.
Yeah, so somebody want to make a motion that we add that to our list of reports that we read the minutes from the Meadowwee School District?
I'll make that motion.
Bobby will make that motion. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Richard second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. So now after that will be a part of the, then at our next meeting after that, we'll read it, so.
So the second, second meeting of the month or first?
I guess.
First meeting, Julie, would this one make more sense?
I guess however it works out, it would be.
Uh, it may, it may be the second meeting, I'm trying to remember, remember how our meetings line up. Um, I think second meeting is most likely, but it's only once a month.
Good. That will be good, it'll get it out there, get it out there on PEG TV again too and stuff, so excellent. And which brings to the PEG TV story.
I like that you called them all stories. Um, okay, so, um, so I guess that's me?
I didn't, yeah, I don't, I don't print anything off.
Let's see, so, so I'm just going to share a message from Tom, who's the executive director of PEG TV, um, unless everybody's already seen this and I don't need to
You could paraphrase it, I think will be quite
Okay, so basically PEG TV is experimenting with some fun new equipment and is wondering if Pollet might like to be interested in utilizing this. Um, there's a unit that has, allows one operator control over three different cameras and there is a computer with an HDMI input, which allows them also to link up to what we're doing to take in virtual attendees and PowerPoint presentations. So my understanding is that it'll just attach into what we're already doing so that from PEG TV, it's a more enjoyable viewing experience. Um, cameras can be placed on desks, tripods, or permanently mounted to walls. They're wondering if Pollet might be interested in a setup such as this, they're trying to reduce the constant transport setup and takedown of equipment. The unit itself would be detached and closed like a briefcase and stored here. Um, PEG TV has offered to provide a demonstration, so William, our fantastic PEG TV representative, um, has offered to do this at our meeting next week and, or next time in two weeks and also Pollet would not be responsible for loss or damage. If approved by the PEG TV board, it would also be at no cost. Um, so we have been, it's been approved that if we have any questions for PEG TV, we can ask them, but you know.
What does everybody think?
Generally, we shouldn't.
Seems like a fine idea
Positive thing.
Okay, so the board is all in favor?
I think that it would be nice to experiment with it at the next meeting and see what we think. There was, there's more setup required, a little bit, some more cords and business, um, but I think it would be worth experimenting with it at the next meeting and
Have them at the next meeting and then we'll go from there. Thank you. Frank?
As far as the permanency goes, if that works out, then putting the cameras up and having them there all the time would be fine, I would say.
That would just be save a lot of monkeying around every week, every meeting. Okay, Town Hall Auditorium Concert Request.
Okay, um, hold on one sec, I just have to So this is from Lindsay Barnes. As you know, Pollet Library is hosting a free concert with Freddie Shahadi on Friday, October seventh, twenty twenty-two at the Town Hall Auditorium. We will provide non-alcoholic refreshments for sale, but we would like to inquire about the BYOB policy. If there is one for the auditorium, we would like to allow guests to bring their own bottle of wine or beverage of choice and request permission from the select board, should it be necessary to do so.
Do we have a policy?
I don't, I don't think so, honestly. I know one time, it's kind of been a vote quite a long time ago, it, it got a no vote, but I honestly don't have a problem. Didn't we allow something here that, that the barn catered or something?
But that had the liquor control board signed off on that because they think the barn catered it.
Right, because they have a catering license.
So they have their own license.
How does the BYOB work? Isn't that your own responsibility?
Whoever brings it.
If you bring it, then there's no liability on us?
Cause you're not serving.
You're not serving, so it's not our problem.
Yeah, a lot of restaurants that don't have a liquor license yet will do BYOB because they don't have a liquor license, but then people just bring a wine and then they're like, someone will uncork it for you.
So I guess it's really no big deal to me.
Yeah, I don't see any problem.
As long as we're not on the hook for any
Right.
liability issues.
Right, exactly.
They were sloppy.
Sometimes when there's alcohol, they limit it to twenty-one and over, that type of thing.
Right, I mean, yeah, just
So you don't have
Sure. For rules, I mean, you can't, you gotta be, you gotta be of age to bring it and stuff like that, but that's, that's kind of a given, I guess.
Given our demographics, I don't think a lot of young people will be attending this conference, concert, maybe a few, maybe a couple.
Well, you never know.
Instagram.
Just wait till they hear it's BYOB.
Somebody want to make a motion, we allow this, I think we should do it at a case-by-case party, um, basis, probably makes the most sense, but somebody want to make a motion that we allow the library to have a BYOB party for, a BYOB policy for Freddie Shahadi?
Sure.
I think you really need to mention the BYOB, but just mention it to the library, however they want to have their concert can do it, you know, cause you're not endorsing
Big responsibility for their
Just the library's in charge of their own concert and whatever they're deciding to do, they do.
Okay. How do we, how do we?
The board unanimously supports the library and
Yeah, I don't know
Perfect, that's how we, how do we phrase that perfectly?
The board unanimously supports.
Okay.
You don't admit to anything.
Right. Confirm or deny? Cannot confirm or deny that, huh?
Um, for of age attendees.
So is that all for new business?
Well, Harley has, um, informed me of something that's new business.
Okay.
If, if it's appropriate to bring up at this point.
Are you ready for him? Are you done with that?
Oh, I can, I'll, yeah, I can multitask, I know what's coming.
Uh, we had another resignation on the library board.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and the board of directors nominates Heather Lund, uh, who is a special education teacher at the Meadowwee School, uh, who expressed interest in becoming a board member. The board nominates Heather Lund and brings it to the select board.
Now, did we do that? We just vote to, okay.
Um, for the duration of the
Of, of the
Term.
Term.
Is it L U N D?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion that we accept the
Bobby made a motion to have a second?
To finish the term.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're all good?
Harley, will you, when you're, would you mind sharing the BYOB update as well? Will you be talking to Lindsay or shall I?
Um, I, I was going to write a note, yes.
Thank you.
I will, um, share that in the spirit of which um
Yes. Choose your own adventure.
No, I can comment though. It's a big question. BYOB is not necessarily BYOB these days, it's another legal thing. This is out there, I just have no idea about that.
Frank?
BYOP?
Well, you're not technically supposed to have any place of public accommodation, so that technically is not allowed.
Not allowed?
Nope, no place of public accommodation. You can't, go to your own house.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, yeah, that's the, the law that was passed since I've been looking into it for the various licenses. If someone had even, even if someone has a retail license to sell cannabis, people can't consume it in the store or on the grounds of the store, they have to take it home.
So the library has bopped the hook on their management policy on that by law?
So we need to have an executive session?
Yeah, so is there any public, any other public comment? No? So it's to discuss labor relations, labor relations agreements with employees.
Okay.